Uh, yeah. It was pretty good. Wow. Yeah. Okay. Nice.
Good evening. Uh, welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Public Meeting for December 6th, 2018. Please, um, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Peason?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Scoville?
Here.
Mr. Sarachi?
Here.
Delphor?
Here.
Vice Chair.
Here.
Okay, next, excuse me, next up on the agenda would be the, um, the minutes from November 8th in 2018.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members are yourself, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Peason, Mr. Hashtag.
The motion to approve the, uh, the meeting minutes, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Scoville?
No.
What? No. Yes, actually, Mr. Scoville is well, I apologize.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Okay, next up on the agenda, um, I don't see any resolutions. I don't, there's no planning board business, a special committee. Um, Mr. Bernstein, do we need to open it from business from the floor, or?
Is there, is there any business from the floor other than what is on the agenda this evening? That means any of the items that are listed as possible applications. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay. No consideration of ordinances, so we can move on to, uh, what's listed on the agenda for the public hearings, subdivision site plan applications. So the first up would be MAC Development Group, uh, Shelbourne Place, File 18 PB-12 MS, Lot 204.04, Lot 25 formerly Block 204, Lot 51, 519 Hillsborough Road. Applicants seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, uh, we're at the EC on 11/26. Request adjourned to January 10th, 2019 without further notice, extension of time submitted through January 31st, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, um, the determination of whether to grant with or without notice is left to the board. I believe there are several individuals in the audience tonight who are here for the application. Um, it is the recommendation of council that the applicant be required, especially since there's sufficient time, tonight is the 6th of December, the next meeting wouldn't be until January. They should have sufficient time to notice, a renotice for January the 10th, and the board can grant the, the, the new meeting, uh, with notice.
So, I, I know we met, um, with the applicant at the Environmental Commission, uh, about a week ago, and I know there was something that had come up that I just want to kind of table out there and just make everybody aware of. I know with it, there was, this application had been seen by a previous developer a couple of years ago. Um, we, the board recommended different configurations. Um, what we were discussing at the Environmental Commission the other night is that there is a wetlands, kind of the northern ender, the end of the property. Um, the applicant was looking to put a detention basin in near the wetlands itself. There is an LOI for the property, but the configuration of the wetlands was, I'm sorry, the detention basin was lower than the wetlands. So we had concern that the, the wetlands would literally drain into the detention basin. So I'm not sure if the applicant is kind of working on that now, um, but there are some things that, I guess, I just wanted to make Mr. White aware of in terms of, you know, from here until the next extension, um, that the applicant might be possibly working on, that and some other things.
Mr. Chairman, we had some, some concerns regarding their drainage system, so that's why they're not here tonight.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, so I would say, um, that we would, um, carry it with notice. Is that what you recommend, Mr. Bernstein?
That's what I'm recommending, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so could we get a motion to carry, um, MAC Development Group with notice, would give them an extension time through January 31st, 2019?
They grant, they granted us that, Mr. Chairman. It's a motion to carry the application to January the 10th, 2019 with notice.
Okay, so have a motion request to adjourn to January 10th, 2019 with further notice, correct?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Delphor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda would be, um, Primrose Schools Children's Center, File 18 PB-10, INF, Block 141, Lot 16.02, um, Falcon, F/K/A, Block 141, Lot 9. Falcon Road, we're going to do an informal review, requested for construction of a 11,850 square foot childcare facility with 49 parking spaces and associated improvements on property in the TC Town Center Zoning District and the ASD Architectural and Site Design Overlay Zone. Council?
They need, they need to be in front of the mic, right up where you posted. You got real close to, otherwise the man with the headset.
How we doing? That's better.
Way better.
And we, we don't need to be sworn in, it's just informal reviews, or?
Well, let's go, let's get the parties in first, so.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Is that better on the mic? Great. Uh, David Himmelman for Primrose. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you've indicated, uh, this is an, an informal, uh, application, if you will, for, I guess, feedback and, uh, relaying your, uh, and the board's initial reaction to this application. Um, you're correct that, uh, the applicant proposes its childcare facility, um, which, um, is, for the record, is Block 141, uh, Lot 16.02, and that's on Falcon Road. And, uh, we do have, I guess, two memorandums, one from Mr. White from Mazer, the date of November 20th, in which he does his review, uh, as well as, um, memorandum from Mr. Patrick Gorman, of course, your zoning official and assistant planner. We've had an opportunity to review those memo, and we're going to address, um, the points that have been raised. Uh, we do have, uh, two witnesses this evening. Uh, first, to my right is Matt Taylor, who is, uh, representative from Primrose Schools, and then we have our civil and site engineer from Bowler, Grayson Murray, who is going to give you an overview of the site plan, uh, trying to address some of the initial concerns raised by your professionals. Uh, and I guess, you know, normally in these, in these situations on an informal conceptual review, I understand that, you know, the applicant's looking for, you know, honest reaction, trying to get an assessment of any major issues that the board, uh, may be concerned about, whether that relates to, you know, the, the layout of the site plan. Uh, obviously, we have not fully engineered the plan at this point, but be able to address, um, at least in concept, what the applicant submitted, and hopefully take those comments back and, uh, further fine tune its, its plan. So, with that said, I'm going to, uh, I don't know if, Mr. Bernstein, you, oh, you're going to want, uh, the witnesses to be sworn in?
No, they're giving you a formal testimony, so I don't think this is needed. I would point out, Mr. Himmelman, and I think the board will, well, this isn't informal.
Yes.
Let's, you know, let's not make too much, uh, you've got the, the, the comments from both reports, I probably would focus it on the report.
I agree with you. Uh, just to give the board some context, though, I would like to ask Mr. Taylor just to briefly describe the, a little bit about Primrose, uh, spend a few minutes just getting into the, uh, some of the issues relative to the operations, number of, number of staff anticipated, because obviously that impacts parking, uh, the number of, uh, the number of children you anticipate, et cetera, so the board has to play it. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Uh, thanks, David. Uh, good evening, I appreciate your time. Uh, first of all, I want to say, I really, I'm in front of a lot of boards, and I appreciate-
You didn't mention your name and it's spelled the last one.
Oh, pardon me. Matthew Taylor, uh, development project manager for Primrose Schools.
What, spell the last name?
T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Thank you.
Uh, I appreciate the, um, effectiveness, really, of having an informal hearing to not really, uh, go through a full design and be told something very different later. It's more productive this way, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
We'll try and be brief, overall. Um, I think that the site, uh, does have some constraints, as you'll see, with the civil engineering side of it, but I believe that we have been able to come up with a building configuration and a play area configuration and parking that will work. Uh, this school will have a capacity of approximately 195 children, with, um, teachers and overall staff of potentially 20 to 22 at full occupancy. Uh, Primrose is a national brand, uh, we run about 85% occupancy across our, our total portfolio. Um, most schools do not run at 100%, just as a point of fact. Um, and if there's anything specifically that the board would like addressed as far as our operation, uh, I can address it as we go through the, the hearing, uh, if there's anything that you'd like specific, just let me know. Um, that's really all I have from my end of it, unless there's anything the board would like to add.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything specific to be said, um, I mean, I know we have the two reports, um, and then you have, you said, two professionals, or just one professional? Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor and I are.
Okay. Is there anything anybody would like to ask?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just a few questions from a planning perspective off the back. Uh, Kiku, a little more in depth for the board and your knowledge of the operation of Primrose School, if it differs from other institutions that may be in our community. Also, please elaborate on possible hours of operation for this facility.
Absolutely. Uh, so Primrose, again, just a little quick background on Primrose, we have approximately 400 locations, uh, across the country, uh, we have 15 in the state of New Jersey, uh, got a couple other, uh, projects in development as well in New Jersey. Um, it's a great place for us to operate, we've got a strong operating, uh, protocol here, we, we feel like this site is a, is a very good, uh, add to our portfolio. Um, we would operate five days a week with no weekends, it's typically 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., again, five days a week. Um, the weekend operation would only entail potentially, um, an open house here and there, or, you know, an event, uh, maybe related to a holiday, or, um, you know, a summer event. And that's the beauty of how childcare works, and not much different than a lot of the childcares you have in town already. Um, they'll run potentially a summer program as well. Um, we're not like an elementary school where every child is dropped off at the same time, we have a, a broad drop-off period in the morning and in the evening, it's typically two to three hours from that 6:30 to 9:30 realm in the morning, and from 3:30 about 6:30 in the evening. So, we don't have a big queuing issue, we don't have people stacked up trying to have their kids taken out of a car. A child has to be physically brought into the building, signed in, in a secure location, and brought to their classroom, and then the parent would get in their car and leave. So the parking configuration we have here works well for that. Uh, it mimics a lot of other schools that we have in play now, and we know that this, um, this type of design works well and efficiently, and doesn't lead to any queuing onsite. Is there, is there anything else, Mr. Gorman, I can answer?
Uh, that should be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
I mean, I, I know I had a couple in terms of, um, some of the traffic flow and the loading, and I was, I was looking at some other things in terms of, um, you know, the stormwater and some of the visions you laid out, um, in terms of that and the parking. It is a, it is a pretty well, um, traversed, you know, and traffic flows, there's a, obviously there's other, there's a quick check there, so I know in the morning there's a lot of traffic, but, I mean, we can, you know, we could talk about that, and those were some of the thoughts I had when I was reading it over.
I mean, Mr. Murray, obviously, could, could address all that. Clearly, we're, we're going to need to, when we come back for formal application, we will need to provide a traffic study.
Right.
Which will address that, which I know Mr. White's office will review. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, what's the closest current, uh, Primrose property?
Operating?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I should be better versed in this, and I apologize.
Warren?
Warren would be the closest, but it's probably not the most representative of what we're building, this is a, uh, I'm not, I don't want to discount what Warren is, but it's, it's been in our portfolio for a little bit. This building is a little bit different design, I think probably more pleasing design, uh, than Warren, but Warren would be the closest to represent what the brand is.
For those of you who don't know, it's on Mount Bethel, around Warren.
Yeah, I, I do have a project under construction in East Brunswick on Summer Hill Road as well. Um, it's about three months probably from completion. I don't think of that as super close to here, but I guess it's closer. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if no other questions, we can go to Mr. Murray, who's standing patiently and wanting to, I guess, go through, uh, I know you've brought a couple of exhibits, uh, which I think are basically blownups of the concept plan, correct?
Uh, way better.
Terrific. Uh, Mr. Murray, why don't you take us through just overall description of the, of the site plan, and then we can get into some specific questions that the board or professionals may have. Thank you.
I will. Thank you, Chairman Julian and board members. My name is Grayson Murray, I'm the principal and regional manager at Bowler Engineering. Um, I'll get right to it in terms of description for the property and have you oriented in town. So, our property is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Opie Road and Falcon Road. The intersection is signalized, and to the west, north for your reference will be to the top of the page, to the west is the existing quick check facility, immediately west of the lot is the detention basin for the quick check facility. To the east, we have an existing residential home and residential zone. South, again, is the intersection of Opie Road and Falcon Road with the Coles Shopping Center and Lowe Shopping Center to the southeast. North is an existing wooded lot. The property is three acres, it is wooded today and undeveloped. Our proposal is to develop an 11,850 square foot Primrose, uh, care facility. We will include 49 parking spaces to the south of the subject building, with access to Falcon Road located at the southeastern corner of the subject property. We've chosen this location for access to be distant from the intersection with Opie Road, to allow maximum queuing in the left turn lane at the signal, but also provide full movement in and out of that driveway to the parking field which houses 49 spaces. During the layout phase, we realized the site has, uh, again, fully wooded condition, but to orient the building and the parking, we followed a traditional layout for this use, and one that separates the activity of parking and drop-off from the school itself, and in particular, the amenities of the school, like the playgrounds, which are located around the perimeter of the school, west, north, and east. We recognize this triggers a variance from ordinance, where there's a unique qualification in the ordinance of a 75 maximum front yard. My interpretation of that, I'm not a planner, but it's to suggest buildings move towards the right-of-way and parking is flanked to the sides or behind. So, our basis for this layout, again, is traditional for Primrose, but also honors the operation of separating the activity here to the south and the front of the drop-offs from the school itself, and the kids to the north. In terms of variances, I'll continue with probably a highlight variance for this application, which is, we have a zone line that runs north-south here on the eastern property line, and immediately east is the residential zone. So we have buffer requirements, and the ordinance stipulates 60 feet is required, and in this layout, we're able to provide 34. However, uh, conferring with Mr. Taylor and the team, we looked at a number of options, recognizing the sensitivity of the use and the adjacent residential use and zone, try and maximize buffering. I'll show you an alternative to the layout that I'd like some feedback from the board, uh, but before doing that, I'll touch on a couple other specific conditions of the subject property that relate to the engineering and the layout. Not sure how long ago it was, I'll say maybe eight years, we were the engineer for the quick check application. And similar to the site condition to the west, this subject property has similar, I'll say, constraints in the terms of shallow rock, high seasonal groundwater, and the requirement, if, if there's familiar board members here, was that we imported soil to raise the quick check site to allow for proper drainage, and the drainage essentially sheet flows to a positive outlet, or a daylight outlet, what we'll call it, which is a swale that runs east-west along the former alignment of Opie Road. Opie Road was vacated, it was then dedicated to the south portion of the subject property. So, similarly here, we intend to raise the elevation of the subject property approximately five or six feet by importing fill. That allows positive drainage to the south into the existing swell and conveyance system. What that also requires, however, is that we construct retaining walls, and on the map that's been filed, um, that is here that I'm referencing, around the perimeter of the development, you'll see a dark line, and that's a retaining wall, as I described. Back to the buffer, we recognize a need to buffer the view of that wall, buffer the activity of the school and the parking from the adjacent residential zone to the east. So back to conferring with Mr. Taylor and just taking some creative looks, I'll take the liberty of approaching this exhibit and show that we've traced here the existing layout on the plan that's been filed, and the thinking was to try and improve the buffer to the east and the residential zone. And a way to do that is to try and shift parking west without interfering with the access point significantly, or just causing, uh, more of a circuitous move inside the parking field. So what we're proposing is essentially a mirror image and start to bias the layout to the west. Looking at it roughly, again, on a preliminary grading plan, we do not have full engineering done, our intent is to provide more buffer to the east. How much? I, I can't tell the board yet this evening until we get into the details of engineering, but the thought is to now exchange, if you will, a variance to the west in front of the quick check and the stormwater basin for improved buffering to the east. Probably introduce another variance in the sense of asking for one on the west side yard, but I would like feedback from the board in terms of, now we're proximate to a detention basin, a quick check commercial operation, that's, that was our thinking. So, with that, I'll say introduction, I'll ask maybe for some feedback, and then I'm happy to walk through any specifics in the letters related to the engineering and the operation.
So, excuse me, I mean, you, you have to figure out how high, you know, you want that wall, in terms of slope, you know, drainage?
Yes.
I mean, it all goes into the thought process, I'm sure.
Correct. We've, um, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we've estimated it's approximately six feet plus, so we've, I'll, I'll say rather conservatively identified on the plan that we would anticipate a maximum wall height variance, but that's based on preliminary grading, so it's subject to a little bit of a change.
And I, I mean, typically Falcon Road has the, um, the, you know, the swells in it that collect a lot of that.
Right.
Runoff water, which, you know, during a rain gets pretty, uh, I mean, the flow gets pretty intense sometimes. So, um, I mean, it is critical in terms of designing some type of stormwater plan that, you know, obviously compensates that amount of runoff, um, and in terms of the, the basin itself, the detention basin, you're, you're not going to tie in to the quick check, it's just an additional one that's kind of designed in a similar fashion, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to highlight, maybe provide a little more detail for you, um, Mr. Chairman, to the west again is the existing quick check basin. Our intent was to be, to provide an independent underground stormwater system on the subject property, which drains at grade to the swell, which you've identified, and get backed up and intend storm events. What I didn't offer, and I should, is that we will fully comply with municipal ordinance for stormwater management design in terms of retaining water, restricting flow, water quality, and infiltration to the extent we need to match the existing condition. So it should improve technically on paper, the rate of runoff coming off the subject property after development would be lower than it is today.
But the volume would be higher?
Correct. More volume, but over a longer period of time.
Approximately how far from the proposed entrance that you have, I can't see from the drawings that you have, is to where that intersection is? If you use your mirror image that you had demonstrated for, does that move that entrance and exit closer to that intersection?
Thank you for that question. So, the, the amount of frontage we have is 280 feet, if I understand your question correctly of how far is our access point from the intersection?
Correct.
So I would subtract about 40, so now we're down to a 240-foot separation.
Okay.
Between access. However, my sketch is a little deceiving in that I would not look to exchange the access point to the west side, I would maintain the access point on the east side for purposes of maintaining the separation of our driveway from the queue lane, uh, the left turn queue lane at the signal. Therefore, although the, the drawing, when I flip it over, it looks like the access point goes to the west, we would have to re-engineer the connection, but maintain the right-of-way connection at the east.
Okay, and there's proposed, yes, and there's proposed-
Mr. White, that makes sense. Sorry, I'm looking at a facial expression that I might have to highlight a little more.
That's okay.
Should I highlight that a little more?
It's a matter of symmetry, so, you know, mirror image, we can come.
So, um, that works as well. The idea that this kink in the wall and the layout was just something we said, all right, flip it over, what does it look like? But to your point, Mr. White, we could essentially take this whole skew and start moving it west, but you'll see wall and starts to become proximate to a playground, but fundamentally we can work around that, your suggestion, but what's key, I think, for the board, please, to take away is that we want to maintain this access point to Falcon Road. We would just have to bake the driveway connection, however, we shift to the west to accommodate a smooth entry and exit.
Are there proposed, I, I see, are like center islands on Falcon Road, is that what those cross-hedged?
No, that is an existing striped or gore area, double yellow line, that would be interrupted to allow through movement of traffic entering and exiting, turning left and right.
So exiting the facility, you could turn left or right onto Falcon Road?
That's correct.
Okay, 'cause I know a little bit further down, uh, there's another entrance next to the Coles?
Yes.
You know, so that, I, I don't see it noted on here, although I do see the only right-hand turn lane, because that, I believe, once that ends, that road narrows back down to one lane in either direction.
You're, you're correct, and, and it's, the Coles entry driveway is offset far enough to the east.
Okay.
That we don't cause any crossing conflicts on Falcon Road.
Okay.
But your point is valid in that if it were close, we would look to align them, that's a standard approach, but it's far enough east, we don't need to do that.
It is, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know, just kind of getting back with that alignment, I think I know where Bob was going with this, is that there could be some, you know, people are going to be backed up looking to make that left in there, and we're going to wind up forcing traffic down that right turn lane, and is there enough for people to swing around, anyone that's queued up looking to make a left into the, uh?
Sure. That's a, that's a great point, and Mr. Himmelman suggested we'll have a study, traffic engineer, if we get a sense that we can proceed, we would perform a study with a queuing analysis and show how far at peak queue that backup approaches our access driveway and make sure we engineer a solution.
Question, uh, trees, are you getting rid of how many trees, or all the trees, or what kind of, uh, what are you keeping and what are you clearing?
Mr. Peason, I don't, is that correct, can I change? Yes. I don't have a count yet, but it is an existing wooded lot with a number of deciduous trees, so I can't estimate it, however, trees are being removed. Now, we want to balance removal of deciduous vegetation along the east that's mature and providing a nice aesthetic and buffer- providing a nice aesthetic and buffer with supplementing evergreen, because I've looked at it in the daylight, and it's a rather thin understory, so we'd have to supplement with evergreen. Screen the wall, screen the parking activity, that is our intent.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, if you're familiar with the study, going back to that queuing, if people are making a left turn in there, is the study, it's not built yet, so you don't really know, but is that based on like a traditional schedule of how many people would drop their children off at 7:00 a.m., 7:30?
Yes.
And stats that you have like that?
Yes, and the study has not been performed yet. Again, if we have a sense that we can proceed, should proceed with an application, they will be hired, and the study will include projections for drop-off over the time period, accounting for the existing volume and activity that happens today. Follow me. They would do counts and then the additional trips for this.
Right, the volume that happens today where?
At the intersection. They would count the intersection, the number of trips.
Oh, right, okay.
And correlate that to the proposed, proposed trees.
Okay.
And also factor in any queuing.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Murray, if you get extensive queuing that goes back, back past that driveway, would it right in, right out, access be amenable? Or is it here, fine?
I'd say to be determined. I'm inclined to represent that, yes, left turn exits from the driveway would be requested on the basis that there's either a courtesy gap or something during the signal queuing that allows someone that's waiting, if I understand the question correctly, someone is waiting in the driveway to exit to the east or turn left. But if the study shows that there's queuing from the signal at the left turn lane back a distance that would block that turning movement during peak hour, we would have to study that and see if it's reasonable to request a cut-through. Just by observation of the intersection, I didn't bring the scale over, but I'd estimate this is 60, 70 feet of left turn lane only, and then there's another 80 feet of striping. So that turn lane has been designed for whatever queue is there, but it may be old. So we'll see. We'll see.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, I know with other daycare centers, obviously, you know, the safety of everybody, you know, I mean Paramount is always the kids' safety, you know, the traffic. So it's obviously something that, you know, we want to consider when we're designing. And, you know, like I said, right now, I know that's a pretty busy intersection, so we really got to, got to think it out and just make sure everybody's safe and, you know.
Noted.
Not just kind of running, you know, having, having a cup of coffee, then dropping off and running across the road. I mean, it's got to be really well organized in terms of what you're talking about.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I understand that. And I'm, you know, obviously, our preference would be to have a full access, and I fully realize that that could be a limitation based on where we end up with the traffic study. So certainly I understand the board's concern, and we have the same safety concerns. If it's a movement that's awkward, that doesn't make sense, we don't want it either. So, thank you.
So, kind of with regards to the parking, because I know that you said that there's 49 spots. I didn't, I don't know if you had mentioned how many employees do you anticipate and what's the enrollment?
Yeah, I can kind of run through, it really is a fairly simple math. Because we have such a long queuing, or, sorry, a long pick-up and drop-off duration, 49 spaces really for us nationally is, quite frankly, it's a few more than we typically really need. 45 is sort of the sweet spot number. Say we have 20 employees, that leaves, you know, roughly 25, 20 to 25 spaces available to pick up and drop off. The pick-up and drop-off takes, you know, no more than 10 minutes per child. Oftentimes, families have more than one child enrolled. You go through the capacity over a two- to three-hour period, we've got more than ample parking for pick-up and drop-off. And the way we design these sites too, if you look at the site plan, we anticipate mostly the, to the right and to the front of the building would be utilized for that. Employees would park left in front, or left and along Falcon Road, leaving these spaces available for pick-up and drop-off. We would have a sidewalk obviously up for safety as well. We don't want to design something that's going to be a problem, especially in the Northeast where we've got, you know, climate limitations as well with snow and ice and things like that. It's, I'm very comfortable with this design, and we've proven it out several times, but I understand the concern.
What about handicap?
Handicaps, I think, right at the door.
Two spaces.
So then the 49, then?
Correct.
Mr. Taylor, would there be any vehicles, to see the primers parked on the property, such as vans, buses, or any of those?
There could be a potential, and I say potential because we haven't fully vetted the program for this, this school. If we find that there's a large need for after-school care, depending on what local schools offer or what is offered in other, in other businesses, we may have a short-wheel base bus, you know, we'd call it minibus.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that. When we get further into this, I'll have a more solidified answer to it, but they'll, they can be accommodated in one of our typical parking spaces.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you expect the perimeter to be fenced?
Yeah, we're very focused, as everyone is these days, for safety of both the occupants and the, and the, you know, the children and teachers. But the whole perimeter of the play area is secured and fenced with a six-foot, it's an aluminum anodized fence, it's pretty attractive looking. There's no way for a child, if for some reason they did get out of one of the doors that are adjacent to a play area, they could only stay in the player, they can't get out of the play area. And the same thing occurs anywhere where there's a door that is adjacent to a sidewalk, it'll be fenced to a play area. It's detailed on the plan, but there's really no way that child can get out of the building and not be captured within a play area. And they're supervised at all times anyway, but it does happen where a child may decide that they want, they want to get out. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't happen often.
How about the lighting? The lighting in the area? The lighting, the lighting, how will affect the...
Well, the nice thing about our use is, again, it's really, we're done fairly early in the evening, and same in the weekends, we don't really have any activities. So the parking lot lighting, obviously we have to meet your criteria for safety. There are downlights in the soffits of the building over the exits, but they're pretty unobtrusive. And, you know, typically, we only leave the perimeter building lighting on for security. The parking lot lighting would be off at whatever proposed time was, you know, amenable to the board and to the neighbors. There's no reason to light a parking lot for no one using it, in my mind.
Is it a one-story building or two?
It's a single-story building. It's really, I describe it as, you know, an oversized executive ranch, that's really what it is. It's a low-slope, three-pitch roof on a single, on a single story. It's an attractive building, but it's really, it's just a large footprint on one level.
And how many, what's your max enrollment?
This will be enrolled, I believe 196 is what I have it designed for, for a maximum enrollment across all the age groups.
And what were the age groups that you have at the school?
I'm sorry. We would accommodate infants from six weeks of age and potentially a school-age program if it was needed, so up to 12 years of age, where we would provide transportation or a parent could pick up and drop off as well.
Okay.
Is the school age your standard?
You know, it used to be. I say that a little guardedly because a lot of the school districts and a lot of the regions we do work in offer excellent after-school care. Now they're off the availability of it. It's obviously much easier for a parent to not have to worry about picking a child up at a remote location, and they go to an area that they're familiar with already. So we find the school-age programs aren't always needed. It really depends. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hillman was talking about loading. You know, we pick, we get deliveries, I'd say, two or three times a week, they're off-hours, and they really come in nothing bigger than what, you know, would be a UPS, sort of FedEx, Mr. ...
Off-trucks.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I was looking for, referring to my engineer. But, you know, it would, it's, they're not, we're not accommodating semi-trucks, it's, they're small, small delivery. Can you break it? Yeah. Bill the Bowler. Great.
You could also address the, the other comment was regarding the architectural and the design standards.
Sure, yeah, and I, I have to apologize, I mean, I looked at the design standards very briefly. I think our building actually more than complies with it, but we will certainly go through that. It's a, what we propose is a stone winds coat at the lower level with a hardy, hardy plank siding above that, you know, with white trim and accents. I think it's a very attractive building. I think you'll find, if you compare it to other childcare providers around the state of New Jersey, I think it's one of the more attractive products. And we certainly have some flexibility, but that's what we would propose. We'll meet the standards though, certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorman, like I noticed on your report where it says the subject property is located in HS Highway Service District and the architectural site design overlay, like, does that mean that they're, they have to adhere to certain architectural design or...
Well, the, basically, the HS district has a set of design standards in itself, and there's also an overlay district that the town has, that has additional standards of what the, what buildings or sites will look like.
Okay.
In this area of the town, particularly the 206 corridor. So they'll just need to look at the standards when designing the building, and some of it pertains to the site also, and see what applies, what doesn't apply, and what they would need waivers for essentially, because this will be new construction.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so you'll have to get involved in that in terms of whatever codes those are.
Now, Mr. Gorman, does, will your, your group leave that design standard, or is there another board or group of people that review it?
Just us.
Okay, great. Well, I'm sure, I'm confident we can comply with it.
Well, us and other professionals are, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of going back with the parking and the traffic flow within the site, because, you know, as hopefully you pointed out where that sidewalk is, so I figure you're expecting the parents to drop off and pick up to the right side, and I'm almost wondering, would it be better to do it from the left side only because, and put the sidewalk there just so that you allow opportunity for people to actually queue up inside the parking lot? Because, you know, you're going to have people coming in and out, and that's going to kind of block some of that traffic coming in.
No, that's a, that's a, it's a very good point, and, yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't do that. We just want to, obviously, we needed connectivity to the right-of-way, but also wanted to make sure that we had safe ingress, ingress for those people, but it could be flipped. Not a problem, it's a good point.
As far as any of, I'll say like evening activities, because I'm going back in my day.
Yep.
You know, they, they'll have like functions and whatnot. I mean, obviously, parking is very limited here, and there's really no place, you know, for anyone to park other than if they're going to park into the Coles or stuff. So are there any plans to try to do any evening activities, and if so, how are you going to manage?
Again, they're limited when they happen, and oftentimes they happen for portions of the age groups in the school, for very, for that very reason. To have 120 parents show up for an event, it's not feasible. So it's usually done maybe as, say, like a graduation from one class to another where, you know, 20 parents may be part of that. It's managed, and we obviously, we don't have any excess available parking adjacent to it, so it's just a limitation to the site, but it's a good point.
I guess my only, well, another thought would be just the buffering between the residential and the property in terms of, you know, whatever landscape type of buffering, or just be cognizant or caring about, you know, the neighbor himself in terms of the border and the privacy and, you know, some type of situation there.
Yeah, no, we want to be sensitive to that. I mean, it's, these are long-term operations, franchised operation, we vet our franchisees pretty significantly. You know, these are multi-decade, you know, people, and obviously, we got to be good neighbors. So we'll work with, you know, Mr. Gorman's group, and, you know, I'm sure that Bowler can come up with something that works well for everyone, and certainly, whatever public input wants to advance that too, we'll certainly comply.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Bill? Anything, or?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
You guys go ahead.
I think we just need to look at pretty much the buffering, the parking, the traffic study, stormwater, as Bill mentioned in his report, and the raised site in consideration for this project. Those are key points that pretty much we'll look at.
That's great feedback, thank you.
Yeah. We appreciate the feedback.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think we had a good discussion tonight, and I think we came up with some, you know, some good discussion. So, you know, it's always good to have, in my opinion, a good dialogue in terms of exchange at this point. Try to table some of those things and hopefully follow through on it, and obviously hear our concerns and recommendations, so we appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, thank you for the board, I appreciate it. We'll see you as quick as Mr. Murray can get things done.
And we value your input and your questions, and I think it would make sense also, as we're developing and implementing the site plan, to work with your professionals on that also, so get their, get their feedback before we actually file.
When would you expect, when you're thinking about having a form already? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just wondering.
Well, I would, I would have put him on the spot anyway.
That's a great question.
So, I don't know. Next week? We'll talk. I'd like, I'd like to be back in, you know, right after the first year, as, or as quick as we can. And I understand that we have filing deadlines and all that.
Understood. I was just, we could hear if it was, you know, a month or six months, that's all.
No, we want to, ideally, want to get back in, and we have timing constraints with the contract of the site as well, so.
Understood.
But again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
You too. Okay, on both sides, yeah. I want to go take a look, I'm trying to...
You probably, you've been by, you probably just never get in.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand the... Okay, next up on the agenda would be Dr. Albert Intenoshia. Did I say that right? File ATPB 11 INF-Block 199, Lot 57, 419 Route 206. We're going to do another informal review, requested for construction of additions to existing building in two phases. Phase one would be 243 square feet. Phase two would be 1,163 square foot, one additional handicap parking space, and design waivers on property in the TC Town Center Zoning District and the ASD Architectural and Site Design Overlay Zone. Counsel?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grode, I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grode in Fisher here in Somerville, and I'm here on behalf of Dr. Allen Intenoshia. He is a dentist, he's been practicing here for many years, he's actually working tonight. He, he has, his practice is Town Center Dental. It's actually, my, my wife got her start as a dentist when she came out of dental school. We're here tonight on the informal review application to construct a building addition to the existing family dentistry pack, practice located at 419 Route 206 in the Town Center TC Zone. The property is known as Town Center Plaza, and as indicated, is located in the Architectural Site Design Overlay Zone, and is located just south of New Amwell and Route 206, in the rear portion of the lot directly behind, I believe it's P-PAC Flatstone Bank. Town Center Plaza has shared parking with the Alfonso's Dunkin' Donuts and that strip center there, other small retail businesses. This application proposes a two-phase construction. The first phase would be a relatively small 243-square-foot addition to the staff lounge and meeting room where they have training. Phase two is proposed to be an 1,163-foot, square-foot expansion of the waiting area, an office area, a reception area, a bathroom for the, for the reception area, and some office space for insurance purposes to discuss with the patients. This application will necessitate design waivers for the 18-foot parking spaces where, of course, 20-foot is required, and there are four existing non-conformities. of course, 20-foot is required, and there are four existing non-conformities necessitated by the site plan, and that will be variances for lot area, this lot is 1.818 acres, and two acres are required. Front yard setback is 97.4 feet, where five feet is required, again, this is located behind the bank. The lot width is 124 feet, where 150-foot is required, and for a one-and-a-half-story building, where two-story buildings are required by ordinance, again, these are all existing non-conformities. The application also proposes updated signage, and variances will be required for the proposed freestanding signs. Unless there are any legal questions, I would like to introduce Mike Ford, who you know very well, to just answer any questions about this application.
Okay.
I just can describe the illustrations and give you a summary of this.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
This is a pretty, I'll say, straightforward, minor site plan proposal. As Michael indicated in the introduction, it's in the TC Zone, so by ordinance, we're required to come before this.
Informally.
Informally, prior to making a formal application. So, this is the first step in the process, it's just to the, adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts, which is probably the most popular facility. Is it worrying yourself? This keeps going on?
I don't know.
Am I too far away?
No. It could be bad, we, I don't know.
The battery? They wanna help let your president?
Talk fast.
No, no.
You wanna try using the other one, Mike?
I'm looking green. Please use that one. Keep talking, talk faster.
Yeah, use the other one.
Sorry, all right, so we're right behind the existing bank, it's, it encompasses the entire, it encompasses the entire rear building, it's about 6,000 square feet today. We're proposing the additions in two phases, only because the whole purpose of this is to enhance the operation of the facility, and right now, the existing access is at the rear of the building, immediately adjacent to, basically, where the trash enclosure is, and that rear parking area at the extreme back of the property. What he proposes to do is enhance the entrance to the building to face more where the Alfonso's, that shared parking between them and Alfonso's. Easy for me to point, okay. This is the existing entrance that I just described, it's, you know, almost about as far and, you know, isolated as you could get, what we're proposing to do as part of this application is to enhance the entrance, and make the primary entrance face this parking lot, so it would be more conducive to people parking here, walking in, as well as people parking across the front, of what I would call the front of the building facing north, and then, as well as people parking here and walking along the porch. So the dental facility houses the entire building, we would be removing this existing entrance, this walkway, this walkway, and building the first addition over top of a walkway, so, a lot of this addition is over top of existing impervious surface, so that's the existing condition, the far-left exhibit. The middle exhibit here is in a large view that now shows the addition, the smaller 243-square-foot addition is at the top of the building, and that would be constructed first, so that when the existing entrance is disturbed by the phase-two addition, that would become, that would be already prepared and suited for the main primary entrance to the building, so the continual operation of the dental facility could continue. We are proposing absolutely no changes to parking, other than some restriping to bring back a handicap space, right now, there's two handicap spaces, in the total of 60 handy, parking spaces on site, where really, another handicap space is required, so we're gonna bring us into conformance, somehow, over the 30 years existence of this facility, one of the handicap spaces disappeared, I think it actually may have been just recently, when this portion of the parking lot was repaved and restripped, so we'd be bringing us back into conformance, but we're well overparked, we're required to have 30 parking spaces in total for the dental facility in the bank, where the existing condition is 60 spaces, and both the existing and proposed condition would be 60 spaces, basically double what's required. With regards to stormwater, for the minimal amount of impervious coverage, the negligible impact, we'll provide a full stormwater report as part of the formal application, and there's a detention basin on Lot 59, immediately adjacent to the site, that handles stormwater runoff. And the last applicant, I think one of the last questions was, when are you gonna submit after the conclusion of the informal, and we're prepared to submit tomorrow. We have fully engineered site plans, applications, it would be a minor site plan, so it wouldn't require a traffic impact statement, or environmental impact statement.
I wasn't gonna put you on the spot, but I'm glad you told us.
And then, as far as the staff reviews, Mr. White pointed out, obviously, we have to address stormwater management, there'd be a full report provided, and then, Mr. Gorman pointed out our four variances that are existing conditions, which Mr. O'Grady pointed out as well, and highlighted for the board that we are also, not only in the TC Zone, but in that Architecture Site Design Standards Overlay, and as an engineer, I, I was just pointing at the two engineering boards on the left and the center, but there is an architectural rendering on the right, which shows you the proposed view, this would be the proposed view of the facility from the, I'll say, the Alfonso's standpoint, in the dance studio, looking from the parking lot in, essentially, this end of the building doesn't change, so it's still, you know, we'd still have the porch as it is today, and this shows the new entrance that I described, which would become the primary entrance, and then, this top view shows the proposed view of the building from the side, or the rear of the property, and basically, the existing entrance is in this portion of the building now, way back in the left-hand corner, it would become an access off of what would be a portion of a porch, and then the entrance, um, facing a more prominent spot.
So I guess, one of the questions I had, and maybe, Mr. Gorman, you could help me here, because on the narrative, you were talking about technically a major site plan application, but since the impervious coverage on the lot is over 50%, however, while this may be a technical major site plan, we're suggesting that the applicant treat it as a minor site plan, because of the fact it's less than 5,000 square foot, so, like, how does that work? Are we talking about the entire parking lot, or does it just kind of pertain to that new development?
It pertains to the entire property, as I understand that how we interpreted this in the past, is that if it's over 50%, then you're, again, major site plan, of course, they can all, the applicant can always request a waiver from the traffic impact study.
Right.
Right.
And such, and all that, and the board can grant such relief as needed, if they want. Of course, for something like this, everything might not apply, but we're getting to technicalities here, yes.
Okay.
Right, the only criteria for a minor site plan is, that we don't qualify for, is that the overall total impervious cover on the site is less than 50%. The existing and proposed is at about 60%, but the other criteria for a minor site plan, where the addition triggers a need for 10 more parking spaces, we're well below that, our total addition is some 1,400 square feet, so.
So how do you address the imperviousness, then? I mean, how do you mitigate for that?
Well, I think, like, the narrative, we would, we would present the application in the technical sense that it is a major, not a minor, but we would ask, and we would ask for those waivers, as Mr. Gorman suggested, the submission waivers.
Some of the other waivers.
Correct.
Okay, I get it. Okay, yeah, I didn't understand that, so, I appreciate the explanation. Anybody else, anybody have any?
Just, I don't know if you can answer anything about, a little bit about the operations, but just looking at the proposed, you know, expanding the, you know, the staff meeting room, any intentions of using that to maybe host from, you know, outside conferences?
No, no, the, and we had, we had a discussion with Mr. Gorman informally, and, you know, they have trainings, but it's all internal, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big operation for a dental practice.
Yeah.
It's a relatively large dental practice, and again, this is for a staff meeting room, and, you know, a place for the, to the staff, to an additional bathroom for the staff, and again, for a quite expanded waiting area, and reception area.
I, I think it's an improvement, I have no problem with it, just to comment on that the building across the parking lot has nothing to do with this project, but I have to say, that's, that's probably one of the most dangerous, where you have a through lane, and people are coming out of that dance studio, and Alfonso's, and those pillars, they like, you can't see somebody hopping right, right past those pillars to cross, to get to their car, where your side has the cars, the parking, up against the, the building, rather than people have to traverse across, you know, a lane of traffic, you know, with blind spots, your pillars are narrow, you can see people coming out, so, you know, I kind of like that, as opposed to the building on the other side of the parking lot, which I think is terrible.
And one thing we didn't touch upon, and our architect isn't here, because we felt like it wasn't necessary, but this will be a complete renovation of the exterior of this, of this building, and, you know, we've, we're working on stylistic, consistent architecture to, you know, to really improve the signage, but yeah, if you look at it today, you'll see, it'll look much more updated than, than what it is now, the existing building.
I'll defer to the professionals, but I think the variances make sense, being that that's tucked, you know, in the back of the, the property, to, you know, comply with the T Town Center ordinance, so, I'm good.
Yeah, just going along with Mr. Peasance thought, though, I guess you just have to be cognizant of it when you're under construction, that, you know, you don't clog those, those routes in and out type of thing, because that, that might get a little messy, you know, during the construction phase, I mean, that'd be a thought.
Any reason for the amount of signs that are needed in this for visibility, or?
Yeah, well, the, the one monument sign out in the road is there.
That's gonna be helpful.
There's an, there's, you know, we did do an Oprah request in, you know, the old Ace Hardware, and there was some signage that apparently, there's no record of, of approval for those existing, those monument signs, but yeah, they wanna, you know, it's really tucked in the back, you know, I don't see it as a, the monument signs that are proposed as being intrusive, and then, there will be, it's not on that elevation rendering, but looking from the road, there will be, you know, the signage on the top of that peak that says Town Center Family Dental, and we're looking at appropriate architecture and lighting for that, and we will be working on, you know, finalizing what makes sense for that signage, but just wants, you know, Dr. Inosia just wants some visibility, because it is tucked in the corner of that lot, so, although, we are, yeah, I guess we're, we're gonna need variances for the three signs.
Yes, so the sign out 4x206 is going to be a, two signs, actually, it's gonna be on, on one monument, one advertising for the bank, and one advertising for the dental office, whereas just now, it's just advertising for the bank. And then, there's an additional freestanding sign towards the back of the parking lot, right by the, before the basing area, before that west rear entrance way, and then, there's gonna be two in the building, and one more additional freestanding sign right next to the building.
Right.
Am I got that correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
One quick question for Mr. Ford, I'm gonna handicap this space, it's so far from the entrance. Actually, I had this discussion with the operator, is, this, because of grade, this entrance here, the main entrance, is gonna be with steps, so, this actually, there's one handicap space here now, the second handicap space will be right next to a level access route that's right onto the porch, and there's, there's doors, entrance, entrances to the building, onto the porch, and, and the doctor actually felt that would also be well-suited for even patients that say have a procedure done and need to be driven home and get wheeled out, or whatnot, that they would go in and out this way, instead of even through the, the main waiting room, and this same porch leads right to the main entrance as well, there's another, there's a door there, so, we think we comply with the ADA with the, I'll say, the most appropriate direct access route for the handicap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay, anybody else, any feedback? Okay. So I think, yeah, I mean, I think overall, it, I mean, it looks like a very well-designed building, obviously, it's gonna increase the, the capacity of the, of the business itself, and the fact that, you know, it kind of all fits into the, the overlay and the architectural, I think is good, so, you know, I think it's, I think we had some good feedback moving forward, you know, I think it, I think it looks like a good project.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Burris.
Okay, moving on, I think we had some correspondence, mostly, it was for, just came in for the MAC development, with some correspondence from the DNR Canal Commission, which I guess, we can, it was from the Somerset County Planning Board, and that's all the correspondence I see, so, is there anything else we need to talk about, or?
A house, two minor housekeeping items, Mr. Chairman, item number one, the board has a meeting next Thursday night, it is an affordable housing project, folks, so. Be cognizant of that, this was rezoned, it's been approved, you people had an impact on it, they tend to be here, this, and obviously, like most things, they're gonna wanna fast-track, so, be aware. Two, I'm wishing you all happy holidays, I will not be here next week.
Wow.
I have an opportunity to go to the city to see a concert at the Garden on Forest Seeds, so, we're, so, Mr. George will be here.
You can watch the video.
I'll go watch the video, I have faith in you all, and this is a project that basically is a mixed-use project, for those of you who don't recall, it's approved for mixed use.
It's one that's got the recreation side.
Don't nudge me with the concerts, it's Andrea Bocelli. So, Mr. George will be here, since this, that will be the last meeting, I believe, of the year, I wish you all happy holidays, and that's all I have.
Okay, great, well, enjoy the concert.
Thank you. Enjoy. Took my mom to see him a couple of years ago.
Took my mother to see him a couple of years ago.
Yeah, great.
We don't need a motion on Andrea Bocelli, right? Could we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.